Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will only be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of the procedure are posted in the town hall and available for anyone to review. Thank you.
So we have everybody signed in online, has a full and complete name, everybody here. I've also gotten members in attendance tonight. We have Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Orte, Brian Crossman, and Rich Hula. And Bob Jones will be here, I think, eventually. I'm Kristin. And for addition, oh, Bob will be coming right along. We have one addition that I'm aware of tonight, which is the new petition from voters under New Business, which Jessica emailed out today, was following the planning commission's meeting last night. And anything else for additions or deletions?
No, my stuff is going to be under your planning commission report.
Okay. So the minutes that need approval then are from our last meeting, which was July 9th.
I will move that we approve those minutes, Kristin.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Hi, Bob.
Any announcements?
Um, no, nothing from me.
Nancy, do you have anything to share with us tonight?
Yeah, I do. So what I read, 25 permits to date, and I recently received the permit from a party that is building kind of a larger square footage house, new construction. We haven't had a lot of new construction in town. But when I went through to try to calculate their zoning fees, I saw that the fee structure that we've used for years is not consistent with what other towns use. And that from a standpoint of, I think I've given you all a copy of what we, what we use currently and what I'm proposing. So once we get over 2,000 feet, there's this, you know, they're set at having a $200 fee, and then it's 25 cents a square foot. It adds up pretty fast when you're building a decent sized house. In this case, I just use an example of a 4,500 square foot house. If we use our current calculation, it's a fee of $825. When I looked at what other towns do, for example, the town in Dorset charges at five cents a square foot with a similar starting fee. They actually charge $175 to start instead of our $200 to start. And then the town in Manchester doesn't have an initial fee, but they charge at 15 cents a square foot if it's over 2,500 square feet, and 10 cents a square foot if it's under 2,500 square feet. So what I'm proposing is that we, I think we really need to get in line with surrounding towns and to make it at least affordable for somebody who's building a significant sized house. I would propose either we look at five cent a square foot or 10 cent a square foot instead of the 25 cents that we currently use. It also looks like that 25 cent that we currently use, historically, that's at like a commercial building rate. So if somebody's building a commercial business, it gets hit at a 25 square foot rate. But I found nowhere else in surrounding towns that charges at that rate. So I would propose that we at least roll it back to perhaps 10 cents a square foot or five cents a square foot.
I keep looking that up, Kristin. I, I agree that we should make it in line with what other nearby towns are doing.
I just thought if we go with the 10 cents a square foot, it's easier to do the math. But secondly, it makes it kind of consistent with what we have already. So if you're building a 2,000 square foot house, it would be $200. If you were building a 4,000 square foot house using this new calculation, it would double that or make it, you know, $400.
Okay, I have a question. Is there anything that calls out just a open barn to differentiate between a house? Like if you built a 50 by 100 barn, just for personal use, for storage, or anything like that, it's a lot less money and a lot less value than a house?
Yeah, so the only difference is with a house is, as you'll see here, it's considered finished space, so garage, porches, all of that are included, and stories count. So it's not just the, you know, your footprint. So with a barn, you're just talking to your footprint, because most barns are single stories.
You have to have a really big barn to start getting over 2,000.
I mean, also, a barn is an ag structure, right?
Not necessarily.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
Because we got a 55 by 70, and we paid a lot of money for the building permit. And, you know, it, it's not a house, so it's...
Then, I don't know, do you want to put another category in there? Do you want to put another category that's perhaps, you know, for, for non-residential, a non-residential rate?
What I, what I've seen is it looks like people say, oh, it's an ag structure, but it's not really an ag structure. So they don't, they don't pay the rate, the honest rate.
Really, I mean, to be considered an ag structure, you're really supposed to be a farm.
Right. And I have seen people that have used that excuse for building a whole barn or storage barn for just personal equipment, so.
Right.
I don't, I think tonight we should just decide on this. I just wanted to bring that subject up to...
And I think it's a valid subject that perhaps, again, we should have another rate scheduled for non-residential, you know, so that when you have storage sheds or barns or something like that, it's not billed at the same rate as a residence would be.
Thank you.
I would agree with that, and also would just add, with the ag structures, should have the Agency of Agriculture make a determination.
Yeah, and that's what the people that have contemplated declare something as an ag structure, that's what I've told them, that I need a determination from the Department of Ag in order for you to call something an ag structure. And then there's, or, and/or, I also send them the page from the Department of Ag that says, this is what you need to do to consider an ag structure.
So do we want to act? Somebody want to make a motion for one of these options?
Sure, I mean, I think that, I think that from what Nancy has said and what I was just hearing, that maybe going with the 10 cent would make sense because it seems equitable based on the amount. And then if later we end up going with a lower fee structure for a non, for like a shed or something, we could make that one be like the 5 cent or something. So I will move that we adjust the zoning fees over 2,000 square feet to be $200 plus 10 cents per square foot.
I'd second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Um, that's all I got from my report, other than I think the planning commission meeting last night, kudos to Jessica, it was a well-attended meeting and very well-run.
Thank you, Nancy.
I guess that segues into the planning commission report. So last night at 7:30, the planning commission held its public hearing first for the proposed bylaw repeal, which was petitioned by voters some months ago. And then we held the hearing for the bylaw amendments that the planning commission has been working on for some time. The hearing was very well-attended, with this room was pretty packed out, honestly, and a few of you who are here right now were also there, which was great. We heard from people on different sides of various issues regarding the bylaws, and in the moment, we were able to hear about some people's issues that they had with various setbacks and things, and just make the little tweaks right in the moment to our proposed amendments to help people out with some issues they were having. So it was really nice. And so I want to publicly thank everyone who came and was part of, and was part of that. So the planning commission did vote to send, well, we had to send the bylaw repeal to the select board because it comes from the, from a petition. And we voted to send our report and a, and a letter with our recommendations, which I will read here in just a moment. And then for the bylaw amendments, we voted to send the slightly altered version of the draft to the select board, along with our report also. And for that one, our recommendation is just pretty obvious. It's like, this is our draft. This is our recommendation for what we do regarding the, the bylaws. The purpose of this draft, change, this amendment that we made, is really to ease up on some of the restrictions that were in the bylaws, particularly in the village and commercial zone, to make it a little easier for people to, to make small businesses. So we've moved a few things to permitted that were unconditional, such as smaller-sized restaurants or retail shops that wouldn't have to necessarily go through a conditional review. We've also eased up significantly on the setbacks, which should be helpful, especially in West Pollet, where a lot of the lot sizes are very small and it was difficult for people to do anything. And we've made some changes also to lot coverage and eased up on some of the parking requirements. So there's a number of small things that will hopefully add up to making it a little easier for folks to do things on their land. This, this draft will now be available. Deb's going to have a printed-out copy here, and I've asked Sean to put it up on the, on the website for people to see. And the select board, it's now in the select board's ball court, and the select board will need to schedule a hearing 30 days or more from today, and we will need to properly warn it. I can get with Deb to do that. And then we will have to have a hearing and then vote on both of those issues. All right, let me read to you, get it here. This is the letter from the planning commission to the select board regarding repealing the unified bylaws, which was petitioned by 5% of the voters. To the Pollet Select Board, the planning commission does not recommend repealing the unified bylaws. Repealing the bylaws would lead to a period of uncertainty for property owners and permit applicants. Since we are currently a 10-acre town under Act 250, repealing the bylaws would revert us to a 1-acre town status and require property owners to go through the Act 250 state permitting process. Repealing the bylaws would have an adverse effect on property values, as the presence of zoning bylaws and the stability they give to homeowners in knowing that the character of the surrounding area will not be altered, has a positive effect on property values. There is a long history of successful approval of bylaws and amendments to bylaws. They have been in existence for 50 years with amendments that were never opposed. Since the bylaws have passed the test of time and are frequently updated and improved, repealing them entirely without an alternative plan in place leaves a confusing gap. Respectfully, Pollet Planning Commission. So that's the recommendation of the planning commission to the select board. The select board can now take this and do as they will. I will point out that in the conversations that we had last night, there were a few people, I would say the majority of people who spoke were in favor of the bylaws, but a few of the people who had signed the petition and did want to repeal the bylaws were, and were present and did speak as well. And my impression was that several of them really wanted to get rid of the current bylaws, but not have no bylaws. They wanted to have simpler bylaws in their place. And my suggestion about that is that first we write the simpler bylaws, and then we replace the existing bylaws, if that's really what people want, rather than repealing, having nothing for a while, and then being out of luck in many ways until we manage to get some simpler bylaws. So that was, I was speaking personally here, I was kind of pleased that there weren't actually 80 people in Pollet who really just wanted to throw out bylaws entirely. It was, it, I got the impression more that it was, things have gotten very complicated, and we want to ease back and simplify things a little bit, which honestly is what the planning commission has been attempting to do anyhow. So I hope that, I hope that some understanding was had between various people last night who had different perspectives. That's about all I have to say, unless someone has questions or comments.
Frank?
It was a very good meeting, and some of the people who had complaints, who signed the petition, we discovered that we already changed this new version of the bylaws in their favor. I think probably some people were pretty surprised that we were at the meeting.
Particularly regarding the setbacks. Like, I wasn't able to build such-and-so, like, oh, we just changed that, the setbacks are going to let you build it now, so. I do ask, I don't think there's anything that the select board has to do at this meeting other than we should schedule the date for the, for the public hearing. It could be, maybe we could do three meetings from now? Would that be? Because two meetings might not be quite 30 days, and I'd rather just make it easy on us.
Sure.
What, what date would that be?
That would be, two meetings from now would be August 20th.
Does that sound good to the rest of the board?
Three meetings, or two? Three meetings, we'd like...
Three?
Yeah.
Would be September 3rd.
That seems...
Yeah, that seems all right.
Reasonable. I don't, I don't know of a lot going on in September. It's not quite budget season yet, so we can get that out of the way.
How's that do with Labor Day weekend?
It's the day after Labor Day weekend.
And, and we would, we would want to do both, just like you did last night.
Yeah, I think we would do one. What we did was we had the one hearing, we officially adjourned that hearing, and then we started the second hearing. I don't know if we had to do it that way, but it seemed the cleanest, so that's what we did.
Yeah, there's August 6th.
Yeah, if it's all right, September 3rd. I will make a note of that and get the warning for that together and get with Deb to get it publicized.
Perfect.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anything? Anybody have any questions for the planning commission? Okay. Road Foreman's report?
So Damon submitted a report, and throughout the last two weeks, the Highway Department has performed truck and greater maintenance, inspected a Beaver Dam, prepared the International for sale, picked up the new truck, prepped for guardrail installation by marking for dig safe, and then continued to meet with the crew daily as the project has progressed. Roadside mowing in West Pollet, grading washout on Chet Clark and Betts Bridge, hauling Crusher Run, and clearing limbs and trees from roadways.
And that's all I have.
Okay, and we, we have the application, we have the add-out for...
Yes.
And working on that for additional manpower.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions regarding the road crew? Assessors' report? Anything from the assessors' office? Nothing? Town clerk's memo? Deb?
Yep, I'm here. I gave you all, I think Rich forwarded it, or, or it was sent to me, and Rich, or Rich forwarded it to me, so I just made a copy for everybody of the review and certification of replacement bridge deck design from our R fellows, engineering. So you each have a copy of that. Jessica, I think, is already going to address the next thing later in the meeting under New Business, but it was requested by the person who brought the petition in to make sure that the select board had a copy. So, Mike, I think I put that at your spot.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and I do need you guys to make a motion tonight. In the past years, we've always put the justices of the peace election on the back of the general election ballot. This year, they're asking, because they've made changes during COVID, and they liked the changes so much that they've continued it into the post-COVID era. And that is to be sending general election ballots to all active, non-challenged voters. So because we're having a local election of our JPs on the same day as the general election, and that we want to put those on the back of the general election ballot, they want the governing body to approve mailing out the local election to all active, non-challenged voters, because the ballot is already going to all of the active, non-challenged voters. Otherwise, we'd have to do a separate ballot, and they would be by request only, and that would be very confusing, I think, for the voters to be getting the general election ballot, not having the JPs on the back, and having to request that election. So the motion that I would like you to make, if you are okay with it, is to allow the JPs on the back of the general election ballot and be mailed to all of the registered, the active, non-challenged voters.
Bob will make that motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Carried.
Thank you.
Deb, can you just repeat that motion?
Yep, so the motion is to send a ballot to all active, non, active, non-challenged voters, the local justice of the peace election, which will be on the back of the general election ballot, which we have always done, but we haven't always sent them to all voters. That's a new thing post-COVID.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I do have, someone expressed a concern about a road sign, but I'm gonna, I'll take that up with Damon.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Deb? All right, thank you for joining us tonight, Deb. Have a good evening.
Good, thank you. You too.
So from Julie, there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $7,174.83, accounts payable $37,831, general fund $11,164.45, highway $18,648.23, wastewater $6,213.15, and reappraisal fund $8,980. Submitted by Julie Mack.
I guess I'll move that we approve those two warrants, payroll warrant 25004, and accounts payable warrant 25006.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
And while we're signing it, I'll just thank Julie for her hard work during tax season. She, she looked, she looked pretty busy last time I saw her.
Emergency management? Nothing?
No.
Health officer?
Nothing that I'm aware of tonight.
Waste water? The only thing, I have texted back and forth a little bit with Jill. She has talked with, what was her name, Greg? From the...
Yeah, I think, I think it's Greg, yep.
So she went, she was able to join them all in the meeting with, I guess it's stone engineering. She has some reservations because stone engineering doesn't have any wastewater engineers on staff. She doesn't feel comfortable about their wastewater ability. So she's working with Greg, and they're trying to pull back in Hoyle Tanner, who started the project. So they're going to try and bring that in because they have much more experience in wastewater. Stone engineering is pretty much basically just drinking water, is what Jill said, so she's...
Very different.
She's, she's working to, to get somebody highly qualified to, to be working on this job instead of somebody trying to pick their way through it, so.
And I was able to sit in on that meeting. I didn't have much to say, but I just sort of listened in to what was talking about. And the stone people fully admitted, they were like, we're not entirely sure why we were given this job, because this is not in our bailiwick, so we want to work with you in a way to get it to somebody who can do wastewater.
Right.
And so they seemed entirely on board with that, that nothing was, nothing was, you know, they weren't trying to say they could do something they couldn't, which was really nice. The one thing that I don't know if you have access to it or not, Mike, Jill has been unable to find the, did she mention that to you? The 100%?
Yeah, I've been, I searched through any electronic records, and I couldn't find it. She reached out to Hoyle Tanner and to one of the women that she knows that should have been able to find it, and they can't find it, so. The, the finally, the 60% report, everybody has, but the 100% report...
Then this was when some, like, three or, I think about four years ago?
Yeah.
We did a initial draft for how to upgrade the wastewater plant.
So I'm not really sure what, what got lost there, but somewhere, I think they can...
We have 60%.
I think they can bring themselves back up to speed, pretty much, so. But that's about all I have as far as wastewater at this point. Anything to report on any of the facilities? Everything's good?
I still can't give a whole Leon quarter. I've been trying, but there's also not a crisis for the sector.
And, and the school board was last week, right? Is there any updates on the gravel pit? Is anybody able to talk about that?
So I spoke to one of the members of the group of volunteers who's been pursuing information, and they determined that it seemed like it was the most appropriate thing for the select board to reach out to the abutting landowners. Didn't really feel like, they didn't quite feel comfortable approaching landowners, talking about potential transactions. So that was the feedback that I got from there. So I wasn't sure maybe now if the select board wanted to discuss that and figure out who they might like to approach and what you might like to ask, because the whole concept, the way, where we left it last time was about the right-of-way, and potentially talking to the landowners on either side to see if either of them would be interested in perhaps carving out or selling or doing something, some land to the town to make the, the roadway bigger, to get in there wider. That was my understanding.
I think the first, or the best approach would be approaching them and to see if they would be interested in some type of a deal to begin with, and then we could discuss, you know, potentially...
See what we needed to do.
Right.
Okay. But we'll, we'll talk among, you know, when we have a chance, maybe you and I can talk, and we can see what, see what we think we want to...
We'll find out if they're interested to begin with, and even, you know, making a deal.
Right. Right, just, right, just to test the water, so to speak. Yep.
Right.
Okay.
And we do have some other options, too. If that doesn't work out, we do have a Plan B.
Yep. All right. Flag dialogue, is that anything?
Yeah, I just put together a little option. I don't know if this had everything on it that we wanted. I'll pass it down this way and look at it. Something like this with the name, these were the things that you said we wanted to have, how much they took, what the exchange was, and if their certificate of insurance is on file.
That's everything we really need to know.
Just pass it down this way. Because if this works out, I can just send the, it's, it's an Excel spreadsheet, which I can just send to, who would be printing them out?
I think it would probably be wise for the Highway Department to have one, as well as one to be kept here. I'm, I'm not sure if Julie or Deb would prefer to have ownership of it, but I think it probably makes sense to have one here in the town hall, and then maybe one...
Yes, because each of the contractors would need to at least file their insurance. Yes, because each of the contractors would need to at least file their insurance. So Deb would need to keep track of that.
So send it to Deb and to.
To Damon.
Damon. He's Pola Highways, right?
Yep.
Yep, okay, I've got his. Great, I will make a note to do that.
Say maybe to Deb, Julie, and Damon, because I think the, this discussion was initiated because of a question that Julie had received about.
And I'm sure that between them, Deb and Julie can work out who wants to be the keeper of this. Great.
Okay, so what about open meeting law changes? You know, I haven't studied that very hard, but does anybody else have any comments regarding the last conversation we had from?
The only thing that I really wanted to, the, the thing that's most on my mind is that for our boards that aren't on PEG TV, which is all of our boards except for the select board, right, that we don't have an easy way to put our recordings up online. So I did last night for the public hearing. It's kind of up in the air whether the planning commission actually needs to record ours or not, but since it was a public hearing, it seemed appropriate to do so. So I recorded it on Zoom, and I got an email today saying that it exists on the cloud and could be downloaded. So I sent that to Sean and said, can you put this on the planning commission page? But I don't know if our website is set up very well to have video on it. So I think that maybe if we were able to get with Sean to talk to him about how, because we're also going to need to have DRB recordings will have to be published, and they're not usually on PEG TV. Library will have to have theirs put up and probably on the library website. And I don't know who manages that, but maybe Sean can just give us some generalized advice. Or maybe the library can link to the town website or something. We can. And I don't know what other boards need to put them up. But yeah, I think that we need someone's technical expertise.
Yeah, so let's talk to Sean and figure out what our capabilities are.
Yeah.
And I also feel like it would be beneficial to have a very clear list from the VLCT of which groups need to have this and which ones don't.
Would you like me to try to contact VLCT regarding that?
Sure, or I can.
That would be awesome.
I, I, I often contact them. I have their light pagebook. And I still, I still like the idea of there being a training on the technical aspects of it for everyone who actually has to record. But maybe after we've gotten with Sean about how that should work.
Yeah, I think it would be the best, I think the best path would be to establish what we're going to train everybody on, make sure that we're totally up to speed on it, and make sure we know where people are going to send things and what needs to be sent before we start to put something out there.
So, very good ideas, and a good solid plan moving forward, so.
And then my one last thing. It does seem like, though, as of right now, everybody's doing a really good job of doing their best. Like I know the assessors worked too. When they had some hearings, they tried their best to make sure that they were recording. I think everybody's aware of it, and it seems like, on the whole, our town is doing a really great job of trying to, to make sure we're, we're doing it. And I think overall we are. It just, we need to make sure that we understand what our capabilities are.
And honestly, I think it's a great idea because I did get an email today from someone who was unable to attend the hearing last night and said, is there a video? And I was like, there will be. Once, once Sean has posted it, I'll let you know where to see it. So, I mean, I think it is a public service, so.
Frank?
The, the, one thing is problems we can think about doing things technically. But when it comes to actually doing it and doing it every single time correctly, like the, the calendar's not kept up. There's a bunch of, like, names that were in positions for years that were not on those positions. And keeping stuff really current, and in this case, in certain cases, for certain groups, which was a good advisory from the Secretary of State, it lists everything in writing. I've been in communication with them. And it's difficult, maybe difficult, because they say must. That means you must, and if you don't do it because of somebody's sick and forgets or something, then you're in violation of the law, okay? And, and it's, you know, redoing a bunch of stuff that we never did before. And really, the record of the meeting is the minutes of the meetings officially. And we're still keeping those. So I've asked the Secretary of State attorney to get us, and I have the instructions, on how to ask for a hardship exemption, which you brought up at one point in time. And if you did do that, just on a flyer basis even, and got a hardship exemption, because it is quite a bit to go through for everybody in all these different meeting groups that would be required, et cetera. And if somebody's sick and nobody else knows how to do it or whatever, the loss is you still have to do it, okay? Is to see if you can get the exemption and still do it, do putting your best foot forward in what we would want to do, but it wouldn't be time is of the essence, precisely.
Understood, Frank. We'll be working on that as we work through this process. Thank you. Anything else under old business? New business? Jessica?
All right, so we have here, let me make sure that I've got my info in front of me. All right, yesterday Deb received a petition from voters, which I have the original of here, and she made a copy for, for the rest of the, of the board. It says, "The undersigned voters of the Town of Polat hereby petition the Town of Polat Planning Commission and/or the Polat Select Board to make the following revision per 24 VSA Chapter 117, Subchapter 9, Section 4441B to Section 1 Enactment of the Town of Polat Unified Bylaws adopted by the Town of Polat Select Board, 713, 2021, and effective 8/3/2021, to be amended to now read." Section 1 enactment. "In accordance with 24 VSA Chapter 117, Subchapter 6, Section 4401 and 4419 of the Vermont Municipal and Regional Planning and Development Act, hereafter referred to as the Act, there are hereby established unified bylaws for Town of Polat, which are set forth in the text and map that constitute these regulations. These regulations shall be known and cited as the Town of Polat Unified Bylaws." Okay, up to that point, we already had, so that's not adding anything yet. This is the new part that they petitioned to add. "The voters of the Town of Polat shall vote to adopt any and all bylaws, bylaw amendments, and bylaw repeals by Australian ballot at the next regular or special meeting of the voters duly warned and held as provided in 17 VSA Chapter 55. Bylaws, bylaw amendments, and bylaw repeals shall take effect immediately upon the date of their approval by the registered voters of the Town of Polat." So basically, it's a petition to have us vote on all bylaw updates by Australian ballot, rather than the select board voting on them. Deb went through and checked that there, there were enough signatures, so I immediately messaged VLCT about them, about it, and I asked them the following question. "Polat is a rural town that has previously adopted amendments to our zoning bylaws by vote of the select board. We also hold town meeting votes by Australian ballot. Today, the town clerk received a petition signed by a sufficient number of voters asking to amend the zoning bylaws to allow them to be adopted, amended, or repealed by Australian ballot. I understand this is a valid topic for a voter petition, so my question is more about timing. Is this something that should go as an article on the town meeting ballot next spring? Or do we need to hold a special vote for this? We are currently in the process of amending our zoning bylaws by the usual previous method, and I assume that process goes on as normal since this petition has not been voted on yet." And then Carl Andier, their staff attorney, got back to me and said, "The voters can't petition to make it an Australian ballot vote before the select board makes a decision on whether to adopt the bylaws. This law was changed in 2023. Previously, the voters could petition to have all zoning bylaw proposals to be voted on by Australian ballot, but Act 47 removed this. See page 18 of Act 47." And he sent me the link to that. And it basically just has struck out the whole, whole section where rural towns can petition to have things go, bylaws be adopted by Australian ballot. So if the, the select board, basically, he says the select board does not have to act on this petition. However, if the select board has voted to adopt zoning bylaws, and this would be also, or the select board has voted to repeal or amend zoning bylaws, then the voters have the ability to petition within 20 days of the vote to mandate an Australian ballot vote to rescind the select board's adoption. And then he quotes that portion of the law. So in short, the voters can petition after a select board vote, but can't do so before it's been acted on. So that was the answer I got from VLCT.
So right now, since we're in process, we can't do anything until, until we're done with our September 3rd meeting?
Yeah, it sounds like whoever put together this petition wasn't aware of the law change that went through last year. That makes, no, no towns are now allowed to always vote on their bylaws by Australian ballot. However, if the select board does something regarding the bylaws that the voters don't like, after the select board has done something, then the voters can petition to have that be rescinded, whatever the select board did. And then we would, if that, if that petition did come through, then we would have to go by Australian ballot, is what the VLCT attorney is telling us.
So this, this petition, in order for the bylaws to be approved, this petition will make any changes or if someone brings forth another one to totally repeal them? Or these new changes as, as we progress to, to make everything more streamlined, would all have to go to an Australian ballot?
That is what, that is what this petition is asking. But the law that allowed towns to do that was repealed last year. So basically, they're petitioning for something that used to be possible, but is no longer possible by state law.
So after September, when we, if we vote to ratify the changes, then within 20 days, they could get a petition again?
Yeah, if someone didn't like the changes or didn't like how we voted on anything regarding the bylaws, they could get together a petition to say, we want this to go to Australian ballot. Yes.
And from then on, would it always go to Australian ballot?
No. Anytime that the select board does something, from what I'm understanding here, from this, that anytime the select board makes, that it will always be up to the select board to vote on bylaws. But anytime the select board votes on bylaws, if the voters don't like it, they can make a petition.
Okay.
I can double-check that with.
I like, I like that explanation.
Okay. But yeah, so my understanding from what this Carl Andier says here is that the select board does not have to do anything with this petition as it is not, even though it's signed by all the voters, it's not a valid thing any longer for them to petition at this point. They can petition after we have our hearing and make a decision.
Frank?
Also, the select board meeting, because the buck stops with you guys, everything that the planning commission has done and did last night can also have, if said parties have a bone to pick, and it's a legitimate bone, because we may have overlooked something, and there's always changes being made to the bylaws, they can interject, and the select board can debate, and as long as it's a minor change, can interject and change the whole process, the language, in the drafts that the planning commission's submitting to you guys at the time of the hearing, when you're having your hearing on it in September. So if anybody's showing up as any beef to pick in particular, they should show up then and mention what they have a problem with, and see if it makes sense to you guys whether it should be changed or not.
A couple people are in the waiting room.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's my report on this, on this topic.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay. Any other new business? Nothing. Nothing. Public comment? Frank?
On the MIRP IR cameras thing, I had one little deal. Is I went up into the attic the other day, and I made a little, made a little noise getting the ladder up and down, but I was, in the wintertime, I saw the insulation glowing, giving off heat. So it wasn't stopping the heat loss through the insulation. There's quite a bit of it up there. It was making it slower going through from the ceiling of the auditorium. However, I saw the other day something that surprised me because I expected to see that to be cooler colored, purple color, because of the air conditioning in the building. However, I saw it actually still glowing, showing heat, and the roof, because the sun was on it, was glowing, so that was radiating, heating heat to the insulation, which then would be conducting the heat down into the auditorium. So the air conditioning wasn't strong enough even to, to make it, the insulation. So there was a countereffect of the sun on the roof through the insulation because it wasn't stopping heat loss or gain. It was just.
What's the solution?
Probably something to stop it, and this is what we're, we're talking.
So we're working on that through that grant process, right?
Through that grant process, right.
Better insulation in the attic, probably.
Yeah, it stops the heat loss.
After they reviewed the bill, they're going to make recommendations, right?
They did already make recommendations, yeah. And Frank is not happy with some of their recommendations, so he's been trying to go back and forth with them on that, which I've left to Frank, basically, at this point. Also, the, the big grants are not yet open. So there's really nothing else for us to do at this point until, until the like $500,000 grants open up, which last I heard might be in October, so we'll see.
What we're trying to do is get all the ducks in a row for, for both buildings.
Keep working on it, Frank.
So at least the engineers know it, because the grants are not minor. It's a half a million dollar split between either building. However, which way it goes is the maximum, with no cost share for the town. So if we can get everything ducks in a row and we get approved on that grant, that's a biggie.
Lauren?
I'm here to talk to you guys about, I know this isn't on your agenda, and you know that we have an opening on the library board of trustees. I'm just coming from a meeting, a special meeting we had tonight for resolution for some violations of open meeting law. It came to my attention tonight, in the meeting, that we also are in violation of our bylaws, which states that we're not supposed to operate without a president or secretary and a treasurer. We don't have a treasurer at this point. We've been, we've had a vacancy since July 6th, and I think that we've been tardy in getting information out. We've had a really viable candidate who the, the town, I know, has come out to support her. I think that there's petition with even more support. Some of the concerns that, as a trustee myself, is I'm getting a lot of pushback if I don't agree. I'm not getting full access to information. I mean, I, I have some strong concerns I've brought with you, to you in the past, but I think that the board desperately needs another trustee as soon as possible. And I'm really asking for you guys to make that accommodation tonight. And I know that it's, it's, I know that you're, you usually wait for a recommendation from the board, but I'm concerned that my voice is not heard or understood, or that you don't really understand the gravity of what I'm experiencing over there and the library is really experiencing. And so I'm, I'm really asking for you guys to consider making that motion and making an appointment tonight. Thank you.
Has there been any more candidates in that one that you've?
Well, I wouldn't know because our chair has not shared that with me. He has not shared that with the rest of the board. There's information that, again, doesn't get funneled through properly. So I, we asked, he said he had some notes, but we've never been, I've never been told. We also have an outstanding person who's willing to do it and also has experience as a treasurer and has experience in our community with the school board. And I just can't even imagine that there's going to be somebody who can compete with that. But I wouldn't know because I've not been told of any other candidate.
Harley?
The Polat Public Library Board of Trustees has advertised for a board member and will meet on 13th of August, which is our next regular meeting, to select someone to recommend to the select board. I am concerned about further dysfunction on the board by having a very partisan board member be selected.
Lauren?
I don't think that. I don't think that, um, I don't think, well, I know that you've talked in the past about the last two appointments you've made. I don't think either of those vacancies were advertised formally. I think that they were recommended from the director and then you guys, and then it was offered to you guys. It wasn't, it didn't go through this process. Again, I want to repeat that we weren't unaware of the vacancy for days. I think I was the one who told the Select Board late, I'm not getting all the information that I believe that I'm entitled to as a trustee, and I'm being treated differently if I have a difference of opinion that I'm not comfortable with. I, I, I don't think that the person that, that has been off, that has sent in her letter of, of interest is, is partisan. I think that she's passionate about open meeting law and, and governance. And I, I couldn't speak to her opinion on anything else.
What does the board feel about this?
Well, I, I just want to add that I spoke to Julie the other day, actually yesterday when I came down to look at this, um, at this petition and then start to deal with it. And Julie says, I'm sad she's not here tonight to say anything, but she told me that she thought she was quite clear last meeting that she would not do the job of the library treasurer. And yet she's been asked to put warrants together for the library board. And she was not thrilled. She's willing to write out the checks as usual, but she is not willing to do the, the task of the treasurer. So I do sympathize with what I'm hearing about there being no functioning treasurer right now in the library board.
Okay. Please, and tell we, anyone on the board can speak.
I, I didn't even know that there was, there was a opening, so I gotta apologize. I had no idea that that was the case. I don't know who, who the, you know, the potential trustee is.
I'm the one who submitted, um, a letter of interest and I, as well as a resume to the board, um, to the library board. And I, I think that this, the seat has been vacant for quite some time, and it has been at the Select Board meetings as well as the Library Board meetings talked about. Um, and it seems like if, if there's an objection to my qualifications, I mean, first of all, it's an elected position. This is being appointed right now because it's open, but anybody can be elected to these public boards. Um, I'm, I did put forward a resume that, that shows my experience. And I'm, I am very passionate about governance. I have, um, real experience with open meeting law and, and I'm not a partisan, I'm not one thinking of one topic only. My, um, interest is to help the structure of the board and the governance issue that has affected the whole entire Town of Pollet, it's affected the Select Board, it's cost us money, and I feel like I can help the board write that and, and turn to, you know, a better direction, gain public trust as well. Um, I'm very passionate about open meeting law, transparency, good governance. That's just, that's part of my being, and I think that the library board needs that. Just.
Do I get a comment?
I just need to make sure we're going about it the right way and the legal way. And if it's been advertised and we only have one person applying for the position, I think we definitely need to consider that.
Sue?
I just want to let you know, we do have, we did bring a petition around and Cory's got 75 signatures on it, voters in Pollet that support her, that know her and think she'll do a good job.
In the back?
It's my understanding that this position is only from now till March, and then she would need to be voted on to continue on in the position. So I don't understand the delay in trying to put someone that's qualified into this job. I mean, at, at one point last month, there was no internet because the bill wasn't paid. Um, it, it's clear that the library needs a treasurer, even if it's a temporary treasurer. We have someone here ready, willing, and able and trying to do it, but I feel that the board is just kicking it down the road to another month's meeting, another month's meeting. I mean, the library desperately needs to have someone pay the bills. Like I rely on that internet upon occasion in town, as I'm sure many others do, and to suddenly have it just not working because the bill wasn't paid was pretty sad. Um, if it's such a short period from now till March, I don't understand the delay in just putting someone in that position, getting the job done, and then letting the town vote on who they want to hold that position in March. Thank you.
Frank?
I'm kind of a little bit of a process geek as well, and I can see, I can see what's going on here in the flow of things. I think that the position was, resignation was from a position of, uh, of being on the board of, of the library, not for the position of treasurer. It's, it's a treasure, the treasurer position is not something we vote on in Australian ballot.
No, but that's who's missing.
Right, that's who's missing. So you, so the first process is you're dealing with, I'm presuming at this point in time, is simply the replacement of the absent, the resign, resign, resignation of a board member of the library. And that the treasurer's role, then whoever gets selected out of the board members is something that gets handled by the library itself and that board somehow in some process and because they're separate, because the town's not voting on a treasurer or a president or anything of, of any officer. Uh, so that may simplify things for you, that you're not actually replacing a treasurer. You're actually instituting the process of replacing the board member that's resigned.
Anybody else? Harley?
I, I do want to concur that I received Cory Rail's letter of interest and her resume, and they, she is a very strong candidate for the board. Also, uh, although we had a board member resign, that was our treasurer, and Cory has the background skills that the board needs now. So I do want to support Cory's statement and other people who are, who know her background.
I, I think I'll just say, I mean, to the idea of partisanship, I mean, we all know that there are two sides in town about the situation with Lindsay having been let go. And we know that everybody who was on the board at the time, the library board at the time, thought that that was what needed to be done. We since have gotten one new person who was elected to be on the board, who has made it pretty clear that she doesn't think that that was what needed to be done. Even if Cory were a person who also didn't think that that needed to be done, that would still be two people on the board who thought one way and three people on the board who thought another way, it's not going to change what the board's going to do, right? It's not like suddenly there's a majority in a different, if we're even talking about partisanship, which I think is kind of silly, but if we are, it's not going to change the outcome of what the board is going to do, but it would put a competent person on the board who has some skills that are needed. I personally, if no one else has yet, I saw the advertisement out front porch forum, I think late last week. If no one else yet has put their, has put their hat in the ring, I, I kind of agree with Bob that we, you know, we might as well just, we have one qualified person who has applied for it, we might as well just appoint her and then see what the voters think in March.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I, yes, yes, Mike, I'm making that in the form of a motion. I move that the Select Board appoint Cory Rail to fill out the remainder of the library trustee, um, board position till March of next year.
Do I have a second on that?
I'd second that.
Okay. So we have a motion made in second to appoint Cory Rail to finish the term of library trustee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
All right.
Now we have a full.
Deb has a hand raised.
Deb?
Okay, so technically, the motion isn't about finishing out the term.
Okay.
It's about, it's about being appointed until the next town election.
Okay.
And then whoever runs for the position will be voted in to finish out the term.
Okay, thank you very much, Deb.
For the clarification.
That is in fact what I meant by that. And Kristen, have you got that?
So the motion is made to appoint Cory Rail to the vacant term on the Pollet Public Library Board of Trustees until the next.
The vacancy until the next election.
Until the next election.
You need to amend and revote.
That's okay.
Okay, I, I amend it.
Right.
I'll make, this discussion was that this motion was amended.
Okay. Do we just need to vote again real quick?
All right, is, is everybody still in favor?
Yes. Next town meeting election.
Anybody opposed?
Till the next.
Deb's.
Deb's. Yeah, until the next town meeting election.
Yeah, because we wouldn't want to think it was the November election or something.
Which coincides with the end of the term of that position.
So, either way, it works.
Is there any other public comment tonight? Oh, you, bud.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you all for coming.